All right, we're going to call this meeting to order. Item one is a presentation item. We have Kinsley Group from the Attorney's Office.
So I'm going to be talking about mainly the licensing portion of the animal ordinance. Okay, can you hear me now? Okay, I'll be talking about the mainly the licensing portion of the animal ordinance that the council has seen before. Okay, um, so for kennel licensing right now, it currently stands that if there's a business that has four or more domesticated animals that are six months of age or older that cares for these animals in return for compensation, that business or person has to obtain a kennel license. That's the current requirement under Rapid City Municipal Code. That's in Title VI for kennel licensing. Right now, under Title XVII, there are some differences. Title XVII deals with zoning and in Title XVII, the definition of a kennel is basically what I talked about from the past slide where it's the four or more animals, six months of age or older, that are being cared for for the purpose of compensation. But a retail store meeting the definition of a pet store is not a kennel for purposes of zoning. So we've got an issue right there where you've got a kennel license that includes both kennels and pet stores, but then in zoning, you've got a definition where a pet store is not a kennel for purposes of zoning, but if you go to the definition of a pet store, a pet store does not include the boarding or breeding of animals for compensation. So there's some issues in terms of definitions that cause some confusion. So the big picture is that currently, under Title VI, a kennel includes a pet store versus Title XVII where a pet store is not a kennel unless the you have a situation where there's boarding or breeding. So it's very it's confusing when you have something in Title XVII that's different from Title VI where a kennel includes a pet store, but in Title XVII, a pet store is not a kennel. That's confusing when you're dealing with licensing issues, especially also when you get into zoning issues. So for kennels, there are restrictions on where kennels can be located. You have to have a CUP, conditional use permit, if you want to locate a kennel in flood hazard, general egg, light industrial, or heavy industrial. For a pet store, you can have a pet store in urban commercial as a CUP with specific conditions and central business as a CUP with specific conditions. It's just simply allowed in general commercial and simply allowed in shopping district. So you run into a confusion when you have a pet store that fits the definition of a pet store in Title XVII, but then you give them a kennel license and it says kennel, but really they can't be a kennel for purposes of zoning. That's confusing. You could have a situation where you have a pet grooming business that fits the definition of a kennel, and because they fit a definition of a kennel, they can only be in four different zoning districts, and that's restrictive for them. You could also run into a situation where a pet grooming business fits the definition of a kennel, but then it fits the definition of a pet store and they don't board. So now they're technically in that definition of a pet store. So for zoning purposes, they might be called a pet store, but then they have to go and get a kennel license, but thinking back to the zoning title, you can't be a kennel if you're going to be a pet store. They're two different things. So it's very confusing when you're talking about licensing. The same thing goes for the number four example where you could have a pet daycare business that fits the definition of a kennel, but not the definition of a pet store, and then it's limited to those districts. So the big picture here is that we have one big kennel license right now, and I, the city attorney's office, and Humane Society talking with them, you know, you're in an uncomfortable situation with issuing kennel license with this current confusion because, for instance, our pet businesses thinking they can kennel in their district if they get a kennel license. You have a piece of paper that says kennel license, but you're telling them for zoning purposes, you're not a kennel, you can't be a kennel, and if you are a kennel, you can only be located in certain districts. So the primary purpose of the licensing is basically to take of this ordinance is to take the licensing and split it into one, two, three, four different parts. This is not a situation where we're looking to add a bunch of regulation. The primary purpose is to split up the current licensing so you have one that's a pet store and clearly defined, one that's a pet grooming business, one that's a pet daycare, and one that's an actual kennel where it's the overnight keeping of animals. So just to go back, we had some public input before this ordinance was originally brought to working session in council, some input was sought, but the primary purpose was to make this split so things were clear. It wasn't to add a bunch of regulations, and I feel like the public might have gotten confused about that, thinking that there were a bunch of new regulations. That's not what the ordinance is designed to do. So here is the current licensing section for kennels, and as you can see with the strike throughs and the underlines, there's not that much that's being changed in a substantive way. It's giving a little bit more direction on how you apply for a license, you know, you should pay an application fee, that type of thing, but there's not much substantive change in there. And then if you look at the new sections that are being proposed for a pet daycare license, a pet grooming business license, and a pet store license, the language is virtually identical from section to section. If you look at the one that's changed with kennels and then the three new sections, so it's virtually identical. So this ordinance is designed to fix confusion. It's not a way to add a bunch of extra licensing for pet business owners that are already subject to kennel licensing. It's not some way for the business to create stiff penalties for pet business owners. It's not any of that. It's to clear up some confusion. And so we had two working groups, and we met twice with pet business owners, other members of the public. Alderman Jones was there kindly, Humane Society representative, Mr. Steinle. We met twice on June 24th and July 1st. There were 12 people at the first meeting, seven people at the second meeting, and all the members of the public who spoke at the June council meeting were at one or more of those meetings. We tweaked some definitions and added a subsection in the care and treatment section. We didn't actually look at any of the well, we looked at the licensing, but we didn't even have to tweak anything in there. Group came to a consensus, and then that consensus is in an updated ordinance, and it should be in front of council on August 2nd. So the big picture on all of this and why I wanted to make the presentation was to just show members of the public and the council that this is something that will cure some confusion, and it's needed because we don't we obviously don't want ordinances to be confusing and have a piece of paper that says license for a kennel, but then you're telling people in Title XVII that a pet store can't be a kennel. We're looking towards future projected definition changes in Title XVII to kennel. And I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you, Kinsley. Pat Jones, you had some questions?
No questions, but several comments, if I may, Mr. President. When this thing first came up about the changes and everything that needed to be done, it kind of took me off guard, and I was I was a little bit concerned as why all of a sudden is this going on? You know, is this a problem and why are we making all these changes? And after conversations with the Humane Society, which I sit on the Humane Society Board representing this council, and Kinsley, and the meeting that took place with the stakeholders after the council meeting, my thoughts, my opinion on this thing did a total 180. What Kinsley brought forward here in front of you is just kind of a spoonful of the whole bowl of soup that we sat through picking this thing through at that first meeting. And it was a real challenge because exactly like she said, people were given a license for a kennel, but kennel has been become a generic term like Kleenex. Here, you want a Kleenex? This is what you blow your nose with, but it's not it could be anything, but it's called a Kleenex now. Same thing with the word kennel. Kennel had become this great catch-all word for any place where there were animals. And Kinsley did a fantastic job in walking all of us through that the process and explaining what she did, because the people at this meeting were very much, you know, why are you doing this? You know, are you you're trying to put us out of business, and we're scared and we're nervous because no one talked to us. And there was a lot of that in the air. But Kinsley guided us through the minutia of all this, and for me, when she did the four things, almost like a magician tearing it up, that was my epiphanal moment, because if this passes, which I strongly recommend that it does, it's going to allow people who are in the pet business, whether they're groomers or boarders, or they sell product or some combination thereof, to be able to get the license that allows them to do what they're doing and then the accompanying level of inspection that goes with it. And it cleans up contradictory statements in ordinances, which Kinsley did a tremendous job of finding and cleaning up. And so I have gone from full of what the heck are we doing this to this is awesome, we've arrived at a great place we need to be, and I strongly support this ordinance, and I encourage all of us to vote in favor of it next week because it clears up so many things, it makes it squeaky clean as the process. The Humane Society, one of the questions that was asked was, well, will the Humane Society be issuing licenses or doing inspections and that kind of thing? And that's in the works as well. So all of this is being tidied up. So I encourage you all to vote for it. It's very, very good. Kinsley, big well done to you. This was a huge project, and to take me from what the heck to absolutely is a big task. And I appreciate the work that you did to get me there, plus the other people there, the store owners, the business owners. I mean, it was wonderful to feel that change in the room that night, because I felt it. And all of a sudden, it went from almost adversarial till, hey, we're working together for a common cause. So congratulations to you. Thank you to the Humane Society as well for their support in this, and I really, really encourage us to approve this Monday night. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Darla?
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Kinsley, I was under the impression that kittens and puppies were not really allowed in pet stores anymore anyway. Is that untrue? I don't know where I got that, that suddenly the mall pet store didn't carry any of those anymore.
I think that's up to the choice of the individual business owner. I don't know of a regulation saying pet stores can't have.
So are those considered kennels because the puppies and kittens sleep overnight there?
No, because they're under the age of six months.
Oh, okay. And do we know of any people that are operating without licenses right now, and how do we think that they'll we'll find them or they'll come forward? Is there a fine involved for not having that kind of license? I mean, we have to have some kind of punitive measures here if you're just operating outside the law or the ordinance.
Yes, so there will be a violation if the businesses don't have the proper license, and that could be a normal city ordinance violation.
Okay. What's that, like $100 or?
Well, that's part of this ordinance. It would change it so it's the same as most other city ordinance violations, so up to $500, up to 30 days in jail.
Oh, right, right, right. Okay, well, that's the end of my questions. Thank you very much for your work on this.
Thank you, Darla. Ritchie?
Thank you, Mr. President. Kinsley, I'm going to take this to the next level. Just a little background, I appreciate the explanation of tearing the piece of paper and separating it out. And then my experience is understanding what you had to convey to the, what is it, the circuit court? The judges had to understand what was going on and the information that you were able to provide for them. So if I may, this looks like it would clarify a lot of issues when you have to go to, is it circuit court?
It's magistrate court most of the time.
Magistrate court, excuse me, yeah. So it sounds like to me that segment, four different segments, it will be able to clarify it for the judge that has to preside over this.
And things having to do with court were probably more along the lines of other provisions in this ordinance with care and treatment, dogs being off-leash, that type of thing. So because there's a lot more that went into this ordinance. It's not just about the licensing, so probably more of what you understand about the things going to court, that was lessons learned on how definitions could be clarified when we're trying to define what's appropriate and what's not, what's lawful, unlawful for taking care of pets.
Because just using the analogy of the Kleenex, I can only imagine what the judge had to go through to understand what you were trying to convey to them. So this, in my mind, will help simplify that as well.
Yes, this, yep, it would be confusing to a judge if the city gave a business a kennel license.
Yes.
But then we went and prosecuted someone because they were in a different zoning district for some sort of a zoning violation, and for the fact that they were kenneling when they have a kennel license, but they were, let's say, they were supposed to just be a pet store, but they were doing kenneling. So then we would have to prosecute someone if they're kenneling in the wrong zoning district. So that definitely would be something that would be confusing to any judge as to why the city would give a kennel license, but then go around and say, wait, you can't, you know, we're giving you this kind of license, but you can't actually kennel. That's very confusing.
Yep, I understand that part. And then just very quickly on the zoning issue, if I'm reading this correctly, it will be able to simplify it for the planning commission as well, because if I understand it correctly, that has to go through that process as well.
Any changes in Title XVII would need to go through Planning Commission, correct? And so Director Fisher can talk on that, but hopefully it will make it so that we have definitions that can be pulled from Title VI and basically moved over to Title XVII and changed in Title XVII.
So any, I'm not sure how I'm going to ask this question. If I get an error, I apologize. So anything that's under the current CUP, will that have to be reprocessed?
Um, okay, under the current CUP, so maybe.
Maybe.
Yeah.
Mr. President? So when we approve the conditional use permits as they stand today, we are very specific to the type of use, whether it's kenneling, daycare, pet grooming, pet store. They will not have to be rereviewed and reapproved. The licensing is just being changed to catch up with where we are already. We in turn will come back and clarify our definitions to match the licensing so that it further limits any confusion between the two.
Are you anticipating any grandfather clause coming into effect on that? Meaning that if they're currently approved by the CUP, they would be grandfathered in?
Mr. President?
Please.
If they're approved through a conditional use permit process and they're operating in compliance with that process, then they're legal. It's not really grandfathered, they're legal. If they're operating out of compliance, then they're not legal in we usually if someone's gotten a permit, a building permit, to do a pet grooming business, and they in turn create a doggy daycare, it just takes a matter of time before the neighbors call it in, and then that becomes a code enforcement issue.
Thank you. That helps. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Roberts?
Thank you. Hey, Kenzie, I want to go back to a question that Darla had, and you answered as far as pet stores. I know that there's a few in town that do adoptions from the Humane Society, and the animals are more than six months old. So how is that dealt with?
Adoptions, can you explain more in terms of adoptions from the Humane Society?
Yeah, so at, I think, I believe it's PetSmart up by Kohl's. They have cats that they adopt out. I was up there a couple of days ago. I think they had one that was three years old, and they had some that were younger. But to be quite honest, if that would throw them into a kennel definition, wouldn't it, if they're over six months old?
Yes, if they're over six months, and yeah, so if they're caring for them, but right now, if they fit the definition of a pet store where they're selling animals and accessories, then they're a pet store. So if it's that situation where there's kind of a component of selling, you know, you're saying adopting, so.
Well, it's, I don't know, $150, $200 to adopt it. In my opinion, that's selling.
Yeah.
So.
So they're legal as a pet store then if.
I'm just curious. I don't want the city to get into any issues with that. I think it's a great thing that they're doing. I've adopted, I think, three animals from them. So I don't think it's a, I just don't want the city getting into an issue with other people saying, well, they're doing it, why can't we do it? Okay? And from there, I just had another question for you. Is there is there a way that somebody is going to fall within more than one definition? So a pet store, so are they going to be have multiple licenses?
There could be that situation, yes.
Okay, and that's been discussed with the group, because I know the group of people were didn't want to get multiple licenses and have to pay multiple. And the other question I had, and this is more for the Humane Society, but as far as issuing the licenses, you know, in the code itself, it says that, oh, let me get back to this, that licenses will be issued by the city's designated animal control authority in compliance with the city zoning ordinances and animal control ordinance. And then it also talks about the state ordinance, it talks about, you know, all of the how is that training going to come to into effect so your people know what all the ordinances are? Because it's kind of hard to, if you don't have that type of training, the average person has no clue of ordinance in Rapid City.
Well, Animal Services Enforcement would have that training, and they'd probably get it through the Kinsley or Kinsley's office. So they would, Animal Services Enforcement would have that training, and they would either get it there. They're familiar with the ordinances now, but they would work with Kinsley or Kinsley's office to make sure it's appropriate and in line with all the ordinances.
Okay.
That would be the process.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you, Kinsley.
Thank you, John. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I understand all the underlying conversation, but the reality is that animals, pets, whatever, are like personal property. So, I mean, I guess if there's a way that we can eliminate some of the red tape, maybe have a hierarchy of the licensing, then I don't want to try to reinvent what you've already done. It's a lot of work. I think John Alderman Roberts alluded to the fact that you got multiple licenses. I don't know if there's a hierarchy in these licenses where they can just go, hey, if I get this kenneling license, I'm covered. The other issue I have is the use on review. That's what seems to get the city in the most trouble, is the use on review. Well, we'll prove it for this zoning area, but it doesn't fit in this one even, I mean, just because a neighbor or somebody complained about it or whatever the case may be. I mean, either we zone it so people know what they're getting into, or we don't zone it. I mean, either it fits that zoning or don't fit that zoning, and we start making these special exceptions and things like that, it seems to get convoluted. So I don't know how we approach that, if, or maybe you have a trigger that does that, I guess.
Vicky Fisher's ringing in. Maybe she's going to answer your question.
Mr. President, so that's really a discussion separate from the item that's before you today. Maybe one we'll discuss when we bring forward the revision to Chapter XVII, which is the zoning ordinance. Of all the uses we've identified today, the only one that is a conditional use is the kenneling. And that is because kenneling, a kennel which usually has outdoor runs, dogs are there that don't know each other, there's usually a lot of noise associated with it. So even though you may be zoned for the use, every site may not be appropriate. It depends upon the neighborhood that you're in. What's adjacent to you? Remember that in our light industrial zoning, you can have a bank, you can have office buildings, you can have retail, and it may not be appropriate to have a dog kennel right next to them when they've got exterior uses as well. But there are other areas that are industrial in design that do have that type of activity that a kennel would fit right in. So of the uses that have been identified for the purposes of licensing, only the kennel would be a conditional use. The others would be permitted within the zoning district of which they lie.
I could, I could wait till that comes up, but I just know that if I could zone them out of my neighborhoods, I would zone some of the people out. I mean, they don't take care of their dogs, they don't listen to the barking thing, they don't approach that, so.
Amen.
I appreciate that, and I'll have that conversation again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you, Kinsley. Item two. Consider taking item to approve COVID hazard pay in first responders off the table and discussion regarding the payment of hazard pay or a COVID bonus to city employees. Open this up for discussion, if there is any. Open this up for discussion, if there is any. Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll get this conversation started up. I know there is some additional stirring going on in the background and I'm waiting for some additional information from the, um, different offices within the city. And, um, I'm willing to have that discussion about, number one, we have to do two different things here, is taking it off the table. And that has to be done at a regular council meeting. The second part will be a little better explanation from the different departments and offices that are entitled to hazard pay. And I don't, I don't know that we've got all that information just yet, unless somebody else has gotten this, uh, information about how that, that money is going to be dispersed or are we taking a different angle on everything yet? But, uh, so I'm asking that question to see if anybody else has got additional information on this. Are you?
Pat Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we have gone into this topic numerous times, you know, we keep coming back to the idea, well, you know, does everyone deserve it or does just some people deserve it or, or what? And when you, when you say who deserves it, it becomes such a, a judgment call and almost a moralistic judgment call where we are, are we creating a hierarchy where some of, we value some of our employees over others? And to that, I, I do not agree with. Throughout 2020, when we were in the thick of this thing, we had employees who were dealing face to face, our, our police, our fire, our emergency responders were face to face with people in the community who were sick, who were ill and were dealing with that. Plus the love, the increase in crime and all the baggage that went with it, they were dealing with them face to face every day. We had a lot of people in our community who lost their jobs during COVID. We had some people that worked for the city and I value all of our city employees and I hope no one takes this the wrong way, but I think it needs to be said. We had people who had the opportunity to work from home, continue to get paid, receive a paycheck and benefits and not have to be face to face with the community. So the spectrum of this is very broad, very wide. And so to, to say that, well, if we're going to give it to some, we have to give it to everybody is kind of weak on our part, in my opinion. I believe that we have people out there and, and more than public safety who were out there face to face every day dealing with this thing. And we need to do something to say thank you and to recognize them. Whether it's a bonus, a one-time bonus now, whether it's an increase in their pay and their wages and negotiations when that comes up, or both? I'm not sure, I don't think we have an answer yet. But I firmly believe that some sort of a tangible recognition of what some of our people did is necessary. All the years I was a teacher, all the years I was a principal, I didn't give every kid an A in class simply because they showed up or did something. Some kids got an A because they earned it. And so we have to have the courage to determine that who at this point in time and that juncture went above and beyond and provided services to us that we could not have, have had unless they were there and attach the risk to that in some way, acknowledge it. Because kicking this can down the road to, to quote, uh, Councilman Richie Nordstrom seems to be the common play. And I believe we need to determine who needs, gets the hazard pay, who doesn't, award it and move forward and not keep dragging this out. Whatever combination of thing we do, you know, let's talk about it. But I don't think we can just say, well, nobody deserves it because we would feel bad if we don't give it to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat, Darla, Drew.
Thank you, Mr. President. Myself, I received, um, letters from different departments, you know, wishing to be included in any kind of bonus or hazard pay that happened. That included, um, Human Resources, the landfill, the water department. And, you know, speaking for ourselves, we were in rooms full of unmasked people for hours. So do we get to be in on this too? I don't think so, I don't think that we, we, um, deserve that. And I'm not going to pick out a favorite child. Um, so I would say that I would be against any, um, bonus or hazard pay. Uh, and also I've heard from our constituents that feel the same. Um, so I'm going to, when it comes up on Monday, probably vote against this simply because I think we'd be opening a Pandora's box of people that would be unhappy because we didn't include them in this, uh, particular, uh, reward system. And yeah, you might give As to some students, this is not that. Um, this is looking at different people as being more important than other departments. And I simply can't agree with that, thank you.
Thank you, Darla, Ron Weifenbach.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I appreciate the thoughts and I think that, uh, one of the things that we, we need to consider here is that this is talking about police and fire specifically. If we can step to that topic on Monday, I would appreciate that. If somebody else wants to convolute the message, they can sure as heck put it on the agenda, take the same kind of, uh, uh, treatment that Alderman Solomon had taken and we can have a conversation about this item on Monday specifically as it is on the agenda. Um, I think that there's been some comments made about, uh, other people. There has been people in our city that have suffered. There's people throughout the city that have lost their jobs. There's businesses all over the city that have, have, uh, closed. Probably not to reopen, some of them open on, on a part-time basis now. But the police and the fire department didn't have a choice in any of it. They don't have a choice, they have to react in all these situations. Uh, the funds that, that we're, that we're talking about were actually used to pay their salaries. I don't know if you, council is aware of that. But the funds that the city of Rapid City collected were used to pay the police and fire salaries for specific reasoning. And that was the hazard pay that we never address and we continue in, um, my colleague's words, kicking the can down the road. Let's vote it up, vote it down, let's move on, let's be professional about it and consider the reality. The police and the fire department, both right now are recruiting. If anybody wants to go down, woman, female, whatever, minority, anybody can sure apply for one of those jobs. It's a high-pressure job in this environment, it's a really high-pressure job. If my colleague, if the people in the community don't think it's appropriate either, then they could let me know, I'm sure that some of them will and I appreciate that. But the fact of the matter is, these positions, we're, we're losing police officers as we talk about this and kick the can down the road and show the disrespect that we show. Either you want it or you don't want it, it's a simple vote, yes or no. It's a simple conversation at the dais that we can have. And then everybody knows where you stand on it and we're good with it. Well, let's vote it up, vote it down, let's move on. Let's give them the respect that they deserve and understand that this originally was set up to help bridge that gap with the environment that they're living in right now. They're getting spit on, they're getting called names, they're doing everything to protect you guys so you can sleep at night. And if you, if you think I'm kidding, just take a ride. Call Chief Hedrick, anybody listening to this, anybody in this building, take a ride on a payday Friday night or any payday night. And I'll guarantee you, after you get home at two o'clock in or three o'clock in the morning, whatever, you won't be able to sleep very good at night, understanding what the underbelly of Rapid City looks like at night when you're sitting safe and comfortably in your bed because these guys are out there on the front line risking their lives, risking their careers, risking everything by maybe having a slip of what they say or what they do. It's going to change their life and it may change yours. Drunk drivers, people who have fights amongst themselves and when the police officer comes, all of a sudden the fight turns to them. So if, in the least case scenario between now and Monday, you got an opportunity to ride with them. I'm sure Chief Hedrick will take you up on it or the fire department will take you up on it. Either way, the ambulance people, ride with them, see what they put up with on a daily basis. Just give them some appreciation to vote this up or down. I don't care how you vote, I know how I'm going to vote. But just kicking, kicking the can around and, and making excuses and convoluting the messages, it's got to stop. Simple, yes, no, vote. And whatever your reasoning is, is your reasoning. Thank you for the time, Mr. President.
Laura Armstrong.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman. About seven, eight weeks ago, we all sat down in small groups when, after the directors presented what they wanted for their departments and whatnot. And so we had a, a lot of discussing to do. So I want to commend, um, Chief Hedrick and Chief Colberson for, um, being advocates for their departments. They have been hit hard, we've all been hit hard on some level during COVID. Um, but if I can remind this council, seven of these 10, of our 10 professionals here was, it was a hard no. And the reason why we said that is because it's prioritizing other departments over one another, it's pitting people against one another. It was mentioned that there were people that lost their jobs during COVID and it just wouldn't set precedent. So the purpose of those meetings is, was not to favor departments over one another, but to see what the priorities were for this council. And believe it or not, we actually agreed on a, a good handful of it. So I'm a little astounded why we're working on this particular topic now, especially after seven people were hard nosed. There was one yes and there were two, it wasn't even on their radar. So I don't know what happened between then and now. Um, I had the pleasure of speaking with Mr. Strout with, uh, Human Resources and it looks like we have about 10% of our Rapid City population working for the city. And I am one that values staff and I think that we should, uh, if we're going to reward staff, we are going to reward all. This pitting against is, in playing favorites, it's, it's not professional, it's very disturbing and it's really not good for morale. And especially in the departments where they're already being kicked down, um, it, it makes them sink even lower. So I, I hope that we think about where we were, where we are and where we want to be, um, even six months or a year from now. But I suggest working on the projects that we all agreed upon first and then if we can, if we have enough money left over, then we give it to our, our staff, they deserve it. And it would rise, it would let everybody rise up. But, but playing favorites is, is not good practice. And that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you, Laura, Jason Solomon.
Appreciate the discussions and just, just for a little, a little background, I distinguish this differently than I did the bonus plan. Uh, the bonus plan was a good plan. I think the HR director did his job bringing that forward as one of many options in order to spend the $20 million of COVID, uh, funds that we had. That, that's one of the options that we had on the table. When I brought this up, I brought this up purely out of we received a letter from the chiefs requesting hazard pay. And anyone who's put on a uniform knows that there are times when you have hazard pay because you went above and beyond, because you put yourself either in the line of fire or at risk. Um, so in response to the letter, uh, I saw that. And then as the last working session, I was reviewing the sales tax revenue and we're having a great summer so far. And I thought, you know, we're so far ahead of where we planned on budget. What, rather than the 20 million, what if we addressed this issue that the chiefs brought forward and took care of the hazard pay? And I did not use the word bonus on person, on purpose, I used hazard pay. Uh, since then, I've heard from some department directors that felt like some of their staff, uh, may have also put themselves in, you know, in harm's way. Uh, I think bus drivers was an example. Those are valid discussions, I think, to have. Uh, but to get the ball started on, on those kinds of discussions, I thought we, we definitely know police and fire. When you talk about fire, you're also talking about our paramedics and those who are running in when everybody else can't. Um, so I was distinguishing between bonus and hazard pay. That, that was the spirit of why it was brought up as an appreciation. And by the way, it, it's not even, uh, enough to say the thank you that we owe them, obviously. Um, but that was, that was really the heart of it, it was pretty simple. I thought it would be just a very simple slam dunk thing, didn't mean a no to everybody. Just meant, um, a yes for this request and then perhaps we could evaluate if there's any others who work for the city that deserved hazard pay. And so that's, that's where that came from. Uh, so I, I somewhat distinguished this from like the general bonus. Uh, I think that's another topic. And, you know, whether we do that or not, I don't know, I didn't have that. I was one of the ones that didn't have it on my highest priority list because I wanted to see some other projects happen because I wanted to knock out some big things. Didn't mean it wasn't worthwhile, just meant in the grand scheme of things, I, I thought some of these other projects needed to be done. However, um, I was just responding to this letter, looking at our revenue and saying, could we afford a few hundred thousand dollars to our police and fire for the hazard pay? And if there are others who are deserving from the departments, that's an analysis that can be done that we up here don't, we don't know. We don't know who deserves that or not. And if it's too convoluted, then it's too convoluted. But I thought it was simple, um, obviously it's never as simple as you think it is. Uh, regardless of where that goes, I do think our police and fire deserve, uh, man, they deserve all of our appreciation. Um, I think everybody up here would agree with that. And, uh, even money's not even the only way to show appreciation, there's a lot of ways to do that. But I, I thought it was a simple, uh, way to, to show you that we have your back. It was tangible, um, you know, I wish I could give, you know, everybody raises for everything, obviously we all, we all want to do great. But I just thought this was simple, a good way to, to start, um, the discussion. And obviously I've received a lot of feedback since then, as everybody else has as well. So I didn't mean, sorry to complicate, if this got more complicated than we expected. I thought it was a simple, simple request and we move forward. Um, but perhaps there's other things to think about as the council deliberates. But that's, that's where I'm at on this, just thought I would pipe in and share. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Jason, Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Alderman Solomon, I don't think there's any need to apologize for what you're bringing up. I, I think it's very, very appropriate. But we do have some additional information. And, uh, um, I know, uh, our, our finance director can give us more information on that, but rather than putting her on the spot right now, is that there is additional information available unless, uh, assumption wants to chime in on this. But with that additional information, I, I think it's something we need to have a little bit fuller discussion on. But I don't want to stop the discussion at, 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 uh, the way I'm reading item number two is that there's an or in there as well. So for me, the way I'm reading it, there, there is two points to this discussion. And, um, we, I believe we are capable of handling both points on, on this discussion. So, um, just some additional information for you is that we've gotten a lot of, a lot of time spent with the, um, American Rescue Plan and that, that is separate from what we are discussing now from the, um, the CARES Act money, which we have put into the, um, a city undesignated cash line item. Two different items that we can talk about and some further discussion to, uh, to review. So, uh, Pauline, if you want to jump in, that's fine, if not, that's fine too, so. Um, but we do have some additional information based on the rescue plan.
Pauline, would you mind sending us an email with the information Richie's asking?
I can, however, it probably won't be before Monday night. Otherwise I can just spill it right now.
Okay.
So basically I looked at the, the ARPA funding that was, um, issued back in March of this year. Currently, public safety is specifically called out as something that is eligible for, um, to be paid out, like the hazard pay could be paid out of the ARPA funds for public safety. Health and, health is also included in there, which water, sewer, garbage could probably fall into that. The other thing is that the executive official of any local unit of government could also designate additional, um, positions that would be covered under that pay as being essential workers. That, that's the first step. Um, there are some limitations based on salaries as to who would still be eligible. Um, and I haven't looked into that completely, but Nick had said that it had to be like 150% of the median wage of the state, if I'm not. of the median wage of the state, if I'm not mistaken, that you can't make more than 150%. Otherwise, you're not eligible to be paid out of these funds. If you worked remotely, you're not eligible to be paid out of these funds. So there are some restrictions, but there are ways to do more than just police and fire out of those funds.
Thank you, Pauline. Laura, you have something?
Thank you. I was just going to make a suggestion. Why don't we take this item and move it to a true working session? We would have more information. We would be able to better designate where it all needs to go. I mean, we're talking about money, so, and especially after this last year, there's a lot of emotion with it. And, you know, some people are really hoping for this, and other people will be devastated if they don't get something. If we can sit together as a council for an hour or two with, you know, our human resources director and our finance director, and figure out a win-win for all of our Rapid City employees, I think that'll be a win for everybody. Again, only 10% of Rapid Citians work for the city. So there might be some taxpayers going, hey, you're playing fast and loose with our money. And it's all of our money. So that would give us time to get more feedback from constituents, talk with our, you know, our staff, the directors, get their insight for their departments, and address the morale, and address the most appropriate way to reward all of our employees. I think that would be a lot more productive than going on to next Monday, and we're just going to spend another hour talking back and forth, and it might get postponed again, or we might just make a snap decision. I just think that would just be a little more intelligently designed, and better thought out, and we can consider the bigger picture. Thank you. Right.
Laura?
Right. This is an agenda review and moving to a true working session. Those are my two cents. Thank you.
Darla Drew?
Mr. President, I'd like a consensus on whether or not we want to vote on this issue on Monday night or move it to a working session. If you could please ask us to come in with a yes or a no on voting on Monday night, I think a lot of us are ready to go ahead with this.
Wade, am I allowed to do that?
Not even a consensus?
Well, we're not voting, we're just talking.
Okay.
Mr. Weifemach?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not always the brightest bulb on a tree, but I'm intelligent enough to know that this is a simple solution. You vote up, you vote down, you move on. And if there's, and if they want to add on to it, we just add another item. This item's been on here, and off here, and on here, and off here. I think that this council is intelligent enough to make a decision and stand on it. I think they've had plenty of time to make a decision. Any facts that they wanted to find out have plenty of time to find out those facts. Pauline makes herself readily available. She answers your emails. Quite frankly, I mean, it's pretty simple for me. We come Monday night, and we vote up or down, and that's the reality of where you stand. That's the reality of where you stand. And if you want to add on another item, like I mentioned before, and I'll make it clear again, there's a process to have that done. Alderman Solomon got persecuted for what he tried to attempt to put this on agenda item. We are talking about the public's money. We are talking about the public's business. We're talking about the public's safety. That's done in a public forum as best we possibly can. We make our decisions based on our council meetings on Monday nights. Simple. Come Monday night, be prepared. If you're not prepared, I don't know what to tell you. Vote however you feel necessary to vote. But we've had plenty of time to prepare. If you want to add another agenda item on, we will have another council meeting as sure as I'm sitting here. Thank you.
Greg Strowman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Alderman Weifemach. We've got one issue that we're talking about here that was brought forth by Alderman Solomon in response to the letter from the chiefs, and we can address that. If we're not going to take a survey or a consensus today, I'm down for saying, I'm ready to vote on this Monday night. And if we have to vote on another issue later, there's a way to bring that up, just like Alderman Weifemach said. So I'm ready to go on this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Bill Evans?
Well, I swore I wasn't going to say anything on this today, hoping to avoid some of this discussion and move on to the main point. I have a brother who is obsessed with birthday cards. And no matter whether you treat everybody with respect and buy them nice things all year, that doesn't matter. If you forget that birthday card, then you're a villain. And it's kind of like this. We get bogged down in this discussion about this birthday card, rather than addressing the fact that our policemen are paid 25% or so less than Sioux Falls. I would rather move ahead directly to addressing the main issue, and that's day-to-day respect throughout the year. Forget about the birthday card, which just causes everybody to fight with each other, and move on to give everybody a wage that's comparable to surrounding areas and surrounding cities with comparable workloads. So that's where I'm at on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Laura?
Just one quick point. Ms. Assumption specifically said that she would not be able to give us all the information, and as Mr. Nordstrom said, we're getting additional information as this is coming on. So I'm not trying to insult the intelligence of this board, obviously. I'm just saying, if we have all of the information, then we can make an educated decision. Being that this additional information's coming through, Director Assumption is unable to provide that before Monday's meeting, that was my way of trying to find a compromise towards this. I agree that we have been talking about this ad nauseam, but we need to do something. But if we're going to do something, we should be fully educated on the subject. That's all I'm trying to say. So thank you for allowing me to clarify that.
Thank you, Laura. And I am inclined to agree with Ron and Greg. I think we should just move the item to Monday night and hash it out. Item three, discussion about forming a committee to review. It is only item three, right?
Yes.
Ordinances and policies on the issue of video lottery licenses and direction to city staff regarding the issuance of the six additional video lottery licenses. And Mr. Nyberg had a clarification question for John Roberts.
I just wanted to ask, when I went back and watched the video, it sounded to me like the motion was to issue the six licenses under the current resolution, and then form a committee to look at the process for future issuances of additional licenses. And I wasn't sure if that was the discussion or the understanding, but I just wanted to clarify that.
You got most of it right. So I think that my intent was to issue the six licenses. So we would have to get that ready and get them out by, what, September 1st? Is that what that? That was when the drawing would be, or the?
Correct. The first meeting in September is when the drawing would be.
Okay. So that was my intent on that side of it. On the other side, my intent was to set up a committee. I've been talking to the council president. Ideally, what I would like to do is I would like to have a committee set up by the middle of August for our first meeting. I'm not a very big fan of lots and lots of meetings, a lot of times, so I'd like to schedule two meetings. I think we can hash this out. I think we can rewrite or reform this ordinance in two meetings. I'd like there to be myself, one other council member. I'd like there to be one person, at least one person, from the city attorney's office. I would like one person from Vicki's department, because of course, this is an ordinance. We're going to have to need some, we're going to need somebody there. Possibly a staff member that could take notes and, you know, meeting minutes on this, for this committee, because I'm not good at that. I've already, and I don't know, this might be a question for you, Wade. Can we set this committee up, or do we have to put it out to where people can apply for it?
So this isn't, since they're just coming back with a recommendation, the rules are a little, I guess, unwritten. Generally, if you were going to create a committee that was going to have some power to act, they would need to be appointed by the mayor and approved by the council. This committee, if they're just going to bring you a recommendation saying, here's what we think you should do, and you can take that or leave it, you have a little looser guideline. So if you want to make a motion on Monday night that says the committee is six people, they have 60 days to give us a recommendation on, you know, these three things include these six people, I think that's appropriate.
There will be a few other people. There'll be a couple of people from, you know, the lottery businesses itself, you know, because you want to have the stakeholders in it. And I think there's possibly going to be one other outside attorney involved in it. Laura made a good suggestion here just a second ago. She said we could term it as a work group, just bringing forward a recommendation to the city attorney for possible changes to the ordinance. Because ultimately, whatever's drawn up by you is going to come in front of this body to either be denied or, you know, voted in. So I think that's plausible. If I can, do you see any issues with putting together staff within the next four weeks to be able to get a meeting together?
It's two weeks, almost. Mid-August?
Well, third week in August. Because I still have to talk to some other people possibly, too, to see what their schedules are like. But I think third or fourth week in August for the first meeting.
I think that's doable on staff level.
If it's doable on staff level, and if it's okay with the city council president, I would like to go forward with this.
Absolutely, John. I'm going to let you take the lead on this.
Thank you.
Bill Evans?
I just think it's really important that when we start such a process, there's a steer, there's a clear statement of what you want to have accomplished, and then a conclusion statement at the end that either accomplishes it or not, so that it doesn't get, you know, distorted and all these offshoots grow out of it. It addresses the question, and there's an answer to the question at the end. I'd just like to make sure that it's set up that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Ron Weifemach?
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree. So Monday night, we can make that statement, so we know exactly what we're trying to accomplish, so that the council's clear on that. Bring a statement forward or whatever, we can work on it, or John can work on it or whatever.
Can I reply to that?
Yes, please.
Because I'm not going to be here Monday night. I'm going to be out of the state. But I can put together something that, you know, somebody can read. I mean, I think it's pretty, pretty basic. You know, I've been on the city council for 10 years. Every year, we go through this. Every year, we have licenses that we're putting into inventory. If you look at the way that the ordinance is written right now, we are issuing too many licenses the way it is. We need to readjust that number for the amount of people that come into Rapid City before we issue another license. It's going to be, in my opinion, pretty simple. We take the licenses we have right now, and this is just one part of it. There's a lot of parts to it, but one part of it. We take the licenses we have now, plus the licenses that we're adding, divide that by the number of people we have right now, add a little bit more of a factor into it. So, and again, I want to speak to Elevate on this. I was there today, but had to rush here, well, back to my office and then here. I would like to see what Elevate's projections are over the next five years. I would like to see, at the very, at the very most, we are getting a new lottery license maybe every two years. There's no reason for us to bank 20-plus licenses ever. I mean, there's really no reason for it. I think that we have to look at, as a committee, we have, or as a work group, we have to look at the way that we're issuing licenses right now, some of the possible changes that need to be made to make you qualified to even apply for a license. I think that there's just a host of things that we'd need to look at, because we're really looking at an ordinance that's decades old, that has never been updated, and things change. Especially now, things change very quickly. If you look at the growth in Rapid City over the last two or three years, we need to be looking five or 10 years out. We don't need to be looking at six months from now. So I think we need to look at an ordinance that's good for us presently, but also will be good for us for the next 20 or 30 years, if it's going to be that long before we change it again. So, you know, there's a lot of things in there that need to be changed. There's a lot of things in there that need to be brought into, you know, today. And I think that, you know, I think that, again, I've always been a huge advocate of putting the stakeholders together, because they're the ones that are going to be affected by this. And I think that this is something that we probably should have done a long time ago. So, anyway, there's a statement, Ron.
Thank you, John.
I think the council gets where you're coming from, so. Did you get all that? Thanks.
Item number four, the one I think most everybody on this dais has been waiting for. Ask city staff to bring back an item to go back to the Public Works and Legal Finance meeting setups. That's something we can discuss and vote on Monday. And Mr. Roberts wants to chime in on this.
Imagine that. I haven't been a fan of this meeting since the very beginning of it. I think that, you know, I've spoken to a lot of people that used to come to Public Works and Legal Finance and brought their issues, problems, comments, that have not came to this meeting since we've started it. I think we've limited somewhat of the public's discussion and ability to come before this. But if you do like this meeting, let's just go back to item two. So if we were in the old format, that would have simplified things a lot. And Darla, we could have made that vote then. You know, now we really can't. We're kind of hamstringing towards what we can and we can't do. And also, we could have brought the thing off the table legally to discuss it. So, you know, I think that, I think the old way, and I usually don't say this, but I think the old way that we were doing business is a lot better than the new way that we're doing business. So personally, myself, I'd like to see it come back. Unfortunately, again, I'm not going to be here Monday night. But I just wanted to put my two cents in.
Thanks, John. Pat Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. From what I recall, a big part of making the change was, there was a request from the department managers, department chairs, to do something different, to try to create more communication. And I don't think that's worked out very well personally. So I would like to know what our department managers have to say, if their, what their preference would be in changing or staying, because we need to support them in what they're doing and help the process keep moving. They're the ones with the boots on the ground. So we need to provide, whenever we can, a structure that helps them accomplish that. So I'd like to know more from some of these fine folks in the room right now, what their thoughts are. Thank you.
Vicki Fisher?
Reserve my time.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you folks may recall, I sat with you in that working session and asked for you to give this a shot. And at that time, we were calling in an agenda review to discuss all items that would be on city council agenda, and to allow staff to have the floor, to be heard. And it didn't mean that you couldn't still take comment from the public as well. But previously, the format was that staff came to committee meetings, and we attend council meetings, and we speak when we're asked a question. And many times, we don't get to make that presentation. We don't get to explain why we made the recommendation that we made. And this was following suit to how many, many years ago, we used to hold an agenda review meeting that was very informal. And when it evolved into the working session, and the fact that you would not make a recommendation, which I know the public doesn't like. But it seemed like there was a lot of presentations that got put on that agenda, which which lengthened the time, and I think that's something also that was concerning. And that probably wasn't the intent of the agenda review, is we should just be discussing items that are going to be considered by council. I don't know that the issue is so much that we meet with all 10 of you at once every other week, or if we meet with half of you at two different committee meetings. What we don't want to lose the ability to do is to still have our items categorized in groups on the agenda and to stand up at that lectern and to present our items to you. If there isn't an issue, we'll say, these are standard items. You see them all the time. Out of the five that's within my department, the one I want to bring to your attention is the number five, and here's what you need to know. And I don't think that we want to lose that. That is of great concern. And, and still, again, the balance of it, where you are taking comment from the public, if that would fall back into place, it does seem like we did lose a lot of that. And, and it's needed. We need to hear both sides going into council so that you folks have time to decide what is the best decision for the city.
Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would agree with what Vicki said. A lot of the concern from my point of view is, it seemed like it was, and I know you guys are very, very busy, so don't take this wrong, but it felt like it was a race to see how fast we could get done. And we weren't given the floor to be able to explain our, our items. And so it, it became disheartening because it felt like we were hired as professionals, we should be able to present, like Vicki said, why we made a recommendation, why we think something should be the way it, we, we just, you know, way we put on the agenda, whatever the topic might be, and we were not given any due courtesy to even share the wealth of knowledge that, that you pay us to have. So, is, if we can continue that process and, even in the committee meetings, and allow us to have that floor, like, like Vicki said, I think it would be fine and the intent would still be there for us.
Thank you, Pauline. Dale Teck.
Thank you, Mr. President. I certainly agree with the statements that both Director Fisher and Director Sumption have made. Certainly, in Public Works, we have a lot of issues that bring in, we bring in front of you. Some of them are standard day-to-day items that don't need a lot of discussion, but some of them are very important that affect all of our citizens, not just certain groups. So I'm in favor of whatever format we adopt, as long as we can have open dialogue. I'll certainly agree with the statement that sometimes it seemed like we were in a race to see how quickly we could finish some of the committee meetings. And the, the dialogue is what I find to be important. I, I can think back to a number of issues that we brought to working sessions where we actually did have a fair number of the public there to share their opinions and to discuss with you and with city staff. So I won't completely write off the working session. I thought they, they served their purpose well as far as having open dialogue. And, and as I've said to you, Mr. President, I don't really care what the format is, as long as we can continue that open dialogue.
Thank you, Mr. Teck. Laura Armstrong.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman. I think it's important for, if there are people watching, to understand the history of like what we used to do. So the way that we're, I, the way it's being proposed is going back to the old way. So people might not understand what the old way actually is. So the old way is the Friday before, legal and finance meeting or a public works meeting, they put an agenda together. So we'd pull staff and say, Mr. Teck and Mr. Strout and Mr. Director Beigler, and put what has to go on there. And then the following Monday, we would go to another meeting, agenda review, and that would usually be leadership of the council, as well as those two committee meetings. Refresh my memory, I think we have eight members that have at least attended a, one of those agenda review meetings? Is there anybody here who has not? You did not? Mr. Weif, okay, so eight out of 10 would do that. And if you recall from those meetings, we would simply just get this in an informal setting, no television, and we're not doing any backroom deals. We're just going over these items. What's going to be contentious? Is this a good time for this? And I, at that time, I just thought, well, only four members from council are here. It'd be interesting to get the other people involved and see what they have to do. But primarily, what we would do is listen to staff. And at those times, we would communicate with one another and collaborate with one another. So then we have that second meeting, and then we'd have our public works meeting, and then we'd have our legal and finance meeting. So we have four meetings. Now, from a business aspect, and running the city is a business, correct? Do you, is it, again, I don't want to use the word intelligent, but is it intelligent to have four meetings in preparation for one meeting? I wouldn't run my business like that. So this was not my idea. This was staff-led, and this has been done in other municipalities. So, we're going back a couple of years. We decided that we were going to do this in October of 2019, and this really never got off the ground until November of 2020. And by that time, we had a whole different council, whole new, different dynamic, and it didn't have the best start. So understand, you know, we have, everybody on this dais appreciates staff, right? Staff wants this to happen. Directors want this to happen. We want to collaborate. But in the, the way that we are doing this is not exactly how it was perceived. We're on the dais, that was not part of it. It's recorded. Again, we're not doing any backroom deals, but I understand you want to have that transparency. I just think if we want to respect the staff that we say that we value and we want to encourage communication and collaboration, if this is not working, we need to ask ourselves, why isn't this becoming a successful venture? So what don't we like about it? You said that the public doesn't come? The public is welcome. What else don't we like about it? I mean, we wouldn't have spent 27 minutes on the ordinance in a simple, informal agenda review. We wouldn't have spent 30 minutes on the hazard pay or COVID bonus pay if we were in that old way. 10 minutes for the video lottery, that's appropriate. We don't want to go straight out the gate in five minutes, but we also don't need to, you know, turn this into a three-hour meeting. I think each of us, and, oh, and one other thing we also committed to the staff is that we said that we'd try it out for a year. So my proposal is, maybe look inside ourselves, figure out, you know, are we talking too much? Should we be listening more? What can I do to make what the staff and our directors and our departments want this to be a successful meeting, an efficient meeting? Because time is money. Every time we are pulling Director, interim Director Fisher out of her office, that's time. Time equates to money. Every time we do that with Director Beigler. And our time as well. We have people that are working and they're going on their second hour of their lunch hour. So how do we, how do we make this, how do we keep our word? How do we tell our staff, we value your input, we value what you say, so let's be committed into making this an efficient meeting and go that way? That's my proposal. Thank you.
Bill Evans.
Thank you. I suggested that we do something similar to this. That didn't end exactly the way I wanted a couple of years ago because I was concerned about the lack of dialogue between the department heads and the council members. It seemed like unless we were doing our due diligence and really researching, nobody, frankly, a lot of people didn't know what was going on, a lot of things they voted on, honestly. And being a new council member, I was confused a lot of the time. Luckily, I had Richie to guide me through. But I think it's important that we keep some dialogue open. I don't think those other meetings were very good about communicating with our actual workers in the offices like Vicki, like Mr. Beigler, like that. I think they're exactly right. We need to keep the talking going. I would suggest that we do go back to two committees. One member from each ward, serving on each half. And both committees meet on the same day, perhaps one starting at 11:30. And then that committee meeting would end, say, at 12:00 or be extended on if something becomes quite contentious. The other meeting would start at, say, 12:30 and be scheduled to go for 45 minutes or an hour or whatever. But that would give us time between the two meetings. If some item was really important, we could have discussion for a half hour or something and have the kind of dialogue. But it wouldn't tie up people on two days. I think it was ridiculous to have one, you know, Tuesday and Wednesday both tied up because if there was something important to discuss, people cannot take two days off of work. Richie can and I can because we don't work, because we're old and we're retired. So we can be here whenever we want to be here. But I think it is important that we make it efficient and whatever setup we try, doesn't waste employees' time. And then we set a timeline. We've had too much, frankly, I don't know. I hate to say it, but there's a bit of grandstanding that goes on in some of these meetings and people, we're not saying a lot of what, a lot of what we say doesn't need to be said now. But we would have some time between these two chunks, two halves of the meeting, to have a session where we could sit down and have some dialogue. I don't like having dialogue in this setting because I think it's detrimental to discourse. And perhaps move it into that other room with the new system we're going to be buying. Hopefully, that'll allow that. But that's my thoughts on it. Thank you.
John Roberts.
Thank you, thank you, Council President. Now, I was listening to Bill and kind of lost my train of thought. But I think one of the, one of the things, I agree with you, Bill. I think it could be done on a single day. But I think you have to put more than an hour in there because sometimes you do get something contentious in there. So, you know, maybe 10:30 in the morning and 1:00 in the afternoon or, you know, in case something like that comes up. I think that agenda review personally could just be scrapped. So I think that we could bring stuff here. I think that would eliminate, you know, one of the meetings. I think that I agree with staff on what they're saying. If you look at the way the old agenda was, was written and the, the public and staff could pull items if they wanted to. I think that needs to be separated out. I think it needs to be public, if they have something that they want to bring out. And then I think it needs to specifically be staff, and that's something that we need to, probably before even the, the comment, because you shouldn't have anything to do with comment section, we should ask you on this, you know, agenda, what is there that staff wants to bring forward? What is there, you know, is there anything that we need to talk about? And then, of course, when we go through the items, if somebody from the general pu, public wants to bring something up, we're definitely going to ask staff opinion on those items. So I, I think that it probably is going to be something where we have to work on our communication with staff to make sure that this is different than what it was. I think that, you know, again, I don't think we can limit the meetings to too short of a timeframe because I think that we're really doing a disservice to the public if we do that. Because I, again, one of my concerns, and, you know, Ms. Fisher even brought it up, that there's been less people from the public that have been attending these. And I, I think that, you know, again, I understand what, what Councilwoman Armstrong is saying about the efficiency. I get that, you know, if you're looking for efficiency, no offense, government isn't the place to look for it and really shouldn't be what we're focusing on because we're doing the people's business. You know, we, we spend money on things that in private business every day I wouldn't even consider, but we have to because that's part of what we do. We, we perform tasks that the privates, the private side doesn't do. So, you know, I think that we should never put finance above the people that have voted us in to these jobs. I think that, first of all, the number one priority of everybody on this council and everybody in staff is customer service. I think we're working for the public, every single one of us, and we have to worry more about them than we have to about ourselves. So, you know, and granted, that doesn't mean that we need to be pushed around. That doesn't mean that people need to, you know, take us for, take advantage of us and take advantage of staff. But I think that we really have to strive hard for openness, accountability, and ease of access for the public. So, anyway, that is my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. If we're going to actually modify this system, I, I still feel it is very important that we get the director's input on it. And then there's various ways of being able to do that. Some was mentioned that, that the comments being brought forward can be pulled off as an item separately from the rest of the discussion. Yes, we can do that. However, there are other items that are on the agenda that we get information about that really haven't taken a lot of time to, or the need for additional discussion. But it is an item that, that some information should be provided. I'm really concerned that the public perception right now is that we have omitted or diminished the public comment period on it. I, I don't totally understand what the public's concern is, why they feel like they can't come in and make a public comment because it is at the end of the agenda. The concern that I have is that it turns into a council-light meeting. That this, this agenda review turns into a debate session. So what I would like to offer in, as a suggestion, is giving the chair a little bit more authority on discontinuing a debate if it gets into that situation amongst council members because there has been, and I'm, fault is as well as others, in, in the crosstalk across the dais. So I would like to see that the, the chair has some ability to diminish that, that type of debate. And there's probably some other areas that the, the chair could have some control over the meeting as well. Because it, it has turned into almost a, I call it a council meeting light, meaning it has almost turned into a council meeting. So that's my suggestion, is allowing the, the chair to put the gavel down and say, that's out of order. So, and there's probably some other suggestions along that same line. But that's my two cents worth. But I just feel that we need more information from the directors. Thank you.
Mr. Weifnbach.
Thank you, Mr. President. I heard what the director said earlier. I think we asked them and they spoke. I think that they were all concurrence, that they just want to have an open line of communication. When I said I didn't attend any agenda reviews, I haven't, and I'm not sure what we consider an agenda review. Previously, when I was on the council, the mayor and the staff and like four council members would get together and have a conversation about stuff that was going on the agenda, which I don't agree with. There's rules and laws that govern our meetings. Whether we want to adhere to those or not is up to us. The chair does have the ability to gavel someone down. The council members have the ability to call point of order. But the, the, I agree. Not here, we don't, but because the chair needs to take control of the meeting. If you want to have a good meeting, do yourselves a favor. Look in the mirror and say, how can I better contribute to a good meeting? How can I read Robert's Rules of Orders? And how can I understand what Robert's Rules of Orders are? When people come to our meetings and the directors included, they expect a level of order and decorum. If the chair doesn't adhere to that level of decorum or order, that's shame on us for letting it happen. Council President, Council Vice President, you got the control of the council. When they, if you don't like the way they're leading the meetings, then let's have that conversation. But if we want to- But if we want to sit up here and just critique each other, that, we can go down that road. I'll, I'll be more than happy to do that. I'm uninterested in that. But if we do change the meeting, the one thing I want is the ability to keep the conversation with, I've never had a problem conversing with any of the directors, whether they agree with me or don't, or disagree with me. But the one issue I do have is how we handle the public's input. Whether we like what they got to say or not, it's their city, our city, all of our city. We all work together. But putting their comment at the front and then having their item way at the back and then, then having to ask them a question when we sit here and spiel out rhetoric for whatever reason it is, and then their issue comes up and we vote on it and they don't have the time to talk at that point when we're talking about their item, is completely ridiculous. It's crazy. It's been that way for years. If we're looking at changing things and we're looking at doing what's right for the people out there and we're looking for that's doing, what's doing right for the director, that's the way to handle it. Agenda reviews where those people are not available, walk the fine line of ex parte communication. And I would, I would expect that the council will look that word up and see what that means to them specifically. But an ex parte communication is when one side talks and the other side's not party to that conversation. And that's illegal. We have to understand the rules. Understand the rules. The chair has the ability to gavel people down. Keep to this, to the what's on the agenda. If you don't like what's on the agenda, put something else on the agenda. Get your item on the agenda. Let's talk about what's on the agenda. That would be my input into whatever we decide to do as a council. Thank you.
Darla Drew.
I'm in favor of going back to the two-committee system for a couple of reasons. One is that we could actually give a recommendation at the end of our deliberations, which help people that come to these meetings know what they can expect on Monday night. They can get denied or they can get, uh, recommended for approval. And then they have a reason to come here and present their, their ideas or what they expect from us. That's one of the reasons I would like to see us go back to the two-party system, or two-meeting system, because we can actually give a recommendation. And this is not practical for anybody that works. I am not self-employed. A lot of the folks up here are either retired or self-employed. I don't have an hour and a half or two hours to have a meeting in the middle of the day. Um, so I would like to see it go back to the other system. But I want it to be a deliberative body like it's supposed to be, not out of there in ten minutes. You know, because then we don't really talk about anything. I would remind people during the legal and finance meetings that I chaired, this is the deliberative body. This is where we talk about things and get ready for Monday night. So we don't have to go over this again on Monday and have a three-hour meeting. So let's use the meetings like they're intended for recommendation and deliberation. And I think it would be a much better system than what we're going through right now. And I have to leave because I, I have to go at two. And I don't want to. I'd rather stay through the whole meeting. But I, I am employed. So, um, you know, I'll be out of here. Thank you.
Thank you, Darla. Greg Struman.
I think that we have to have, um, deliberative meetings. I, I regret that if the communication is not good between the directors and the council, um, we need to address that. But I don't think every communication has to be done, um, on the dais. I think we can have informal communications. To say, this is coming up. What do you think about this? Or I've got a question about that. I email directors. They email me back. Um, I think it works. They're very responsive. It's very, um, I hope I'm responsive to them. Um, I think I have been. Uh, for instance, when, um, the police chief and the fire chief emailed the council members, I got back to them right away. I think there's lots of ways to do this that's more efficient than this working session. And like Darla, I have to leave today. So, um, I, I do think that, um, there's a tendency in this informal, um, setting to just basically, um, express every thought. And every thought doesn't have to be expressed. I like the formality of the, and the order of the committee meetings because then I think people are, um, more on task and more precise and, and focused a little bit more than just rambling. So as I end my ramble, I'm going to have to leave. So, thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Jason Solomon.
Yeah, uh, very quickly, just because everybody's chimed in, I, I think going back is good with lessons learned from this. I think better dialogue from the department directors, I think is a, I think it's fair. Uh, I think that's great. I think that's a good outcome. And, um, I would just urge, the reason it was done over Tuesday and Wednesday around lunch hour is for the, both the public and the council members who do have jobs. That when you do it mid-afternoon, mid-morning, it, it is, you're, you're telling people, don't run for office. And you're telling constituents, hey, we're going to do it at the most inconvenient times for you, even though it's convenient for us. That was the reason historically, from what I was told historically by the Nordstroms of the world, by why we do things like that. But I think there's lessons to be learned. Um, so I would support, uh, moving back. Thank you.
Bill Evans.
Well, one more, one more thought concerning going back to, uh, why I mentioned one member from each ward serving on the committee, and I'm assuming this is the reason it was done in the first place. Um, I think it's a responsibility of that person that's on legal finance to share with the person that's on the other committee after they've done the, the research to say, this is why this is contentious. This was his problem. And for the person on the public work side to go through and find out what the real issue is so they can share it with their colleague and do that. It divides the, uh, it divides responsibilities up and provides for a little bit more, uh, depth of research on each part. But I think it's, should be their duty to share the information and find out with the other person. And I think we need to make that very clear if we go back to that system. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Chief Long, you still awake over there? Item five and six, please.
Could I, I just would like to say on this item, when you bring it forward, uh, Monday night and if you decide to split it, we will have, uh, probably at least a two-week lag with the way we've put things. We've already noticed some things on the, the website and publicly. So there, when you do it, make sure we have a discussion about when we can go live with it. So we, so we have time to.
So if we gave a thirty-day notice, Jim, that would be sufficient.
That'd be what I would prefer, but.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Brett.
All right, uh, Mr. President, council members. Uh, yes, the, uh, resolution, uh, to write off our uncollectible ambulance billing accounts. Uh, we're in that position again. We're trying to get these written off about twice a year to, uh, reduce the amount each time that we do this. Starting to get caught up, which is great, uh, but we still have a ways to go, so.
And item six?
Uh, item six, uh, basically we had an ambulance that was in an accident, uh, back in the end of, uh, January. Uh, it was, ended up being totaled by the insurance company. We did receive a, a little bit of settlement for the chassis portion of that. Uh, ambulance is composed of basically two components. The ambulance care compartment, which is the box and the chassis. Uh, we've, uh, have a, a bid that was used by a couple of other local governments in the area, uh, just this year uh, to have that, that box component remounted onto a new chassis. Going to be able to extend us out probably another six or seven years on the life of this, uh, ambulance and save us some money in the long run. So we'd like to move forward with that.
Thank you. Mr. Waffenbach, you have some questions?
No, I don't really have a question, but I have a comment. I talked to, um, Chief Culberson about, um, delinquent accounts and collectibles and stuff like that. And, and we talked about getting on a, a quicker turnaround time to, because you'll probably see a big number come across the table. And if you don't understand what they're doing with their collectibles, call them ahead of time or call Pauline and get an explanation of how that works. So we're not spending a lot of time talking about the same thing over and over and over because the number scares everybody. It's, it's uncollectible. They're trying to collect it, but they have to write it off their books. So we're, you know, we're looking at trying to do it in a more periodic way and they're working on that. So, thank you.
Thank you, John Roberts.
Thank you. And this is always an uncomfortable thing, you know, because it's always like somebody brings something up. But if you really look at your ordinance and you look at what you're writing off, I mean, everything on there is uncollectible. I mean, people are either deceased, people, you know, the insurance company isn't paying the full amount, uh, you know, or it is past the statute of limitations to actually be able to collect it. So I think it's very easy as long as people take a look at the ordinance. There shouldn't really be any discussion on it. But, uh, I don't envy you being put in this place and having all kinds of people calling you and saying, why are you writing off seven hundred thousand dollars worth of, you know? But unfortunately, even in business, you know, like Laura, I wanted to bring up business earlier. We all have uncollectible debt. So, and the city, because we've got a two-hundred-million-dollar budget a year, we have a lot higher uncollectible debt than most people have. So people out there looking at this and thinking that we're not doing and our departments aren't doing everything they can, they're wrong. I mean, we tried to collect this for many, many years. You look back at some of these, they're as early as two thousand and nine. So, anyway, I want to commend you on everything that you do. I think you're doing a great job. And it's just unfortunate that this is a part of business. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Dunn, item seven.
Thank you, council members. Mr. President. Uh, this is the Edward Bryan Memorial Justice Grant. It's a grant we've applied for annually. Um, we're very familiar with it. Um, what we're looking at is a hundred and seven thousand dollars for eighteen months to cover salary and benefits for a detective position. There is no match, so no city match for this grant. Um, it's a com- non-competitive yearly award that goes out to a hundred or a thousand law enforcement agencies across the nation. Um, in the past, we've utilized it to purchase equipment and such. I know this will be a question. Uh, the, the, the only thing that is required of us from the grant is grant reporting, and it's very minimal. Uh, quarterly reporting on the activities of the team or the activities of the person, the FTE that we're asking for here. And additionally, there are requirements that we report our crime through the National Incident-Based Reporting System. And luckily, this is something we already do anyways. Currently, uh, the Police Department partners with the Sheriff's Office on our sexual assault investigative team. Um, the Penning, Penning County Sheriff's Office has four investigators. We have one. Uh, we see this as a way to bring, uh, Rapid City Staffing to add a dedicated detective to increase our support for that team and bring the caseload down for the, for each individual team member. The investigation of sexual assaults is a priority for us and we want to continue to allocate resources to properly continue to protect and also provide justice for our victims. So that is the summary of this grant. Um, we're just asking to, uh, apply for it and accept if awarded.
Thank you, Chief. No one's ringing in. Mr. Beigler.
Uh, thank you. Um, items eight, nine, and ten are standard, uh, resolutions of intent to enter into lease agreements with, uh, three different organizations for use of city, uh, facilities for their programs. Uh, number eight, the Rapid City Midget Football Association leases a small building out at Star of the West, uh, complex for their, uh, to keep all of their equipment and to operate out of. So we've been, this is an agreement that's been ongoing for a long, long time. Uh, the two others, Rushmore Hockey, uh, Association and the Black Hills Figure Skating Club. Those agreements are for, are for use of the ice at Roosevelt Ice Arena for their programs. Uh, the actual lease agreements will come before you at the August sixteenth meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Beigler. Pauline, and you asked for a little extra time because you had an announcement today.
I do. Um, I'll go through this stuff first. Eleven is standard. Twelve, that is the downtown bid assessment. We are aware that at least three properties have changed hands since we sent out the notices. So for Monday night, we'll have that corrected. Um, I can't name them off the top of my head, but there, so if we've got any new owners, we'll put those on there. And thirteen, the June general fund cash balance is thirty-seven million, one seventy-seven, eight fifty-five, seventy-eight. On to my other news. If you remember back in April, I believe, you gave, um, me authorization to refinance part of our sales tax bonds that we issued in two thousand and eighteen to construct the new arena over at the now monument. We've been kind of holding off because the interest rates had increased while they started going down again. So I started working with, um, Tom from Colliers and Paul Baird from, not Paul Baird, Paul Donna from Baird, um, in getting that refinancing done to. The numbers that they showed me yesterday as preliminary based on information, um, we're still looking at about a nine-million-dollar, uh, savings as well as cutting off a, a little more than two years of payments at the end of the, the, the bond cycle. And then today, we got the final numbers. Well, I should also say, they, they gave me a live feed because they're doing some pre-interest, you know, trying to figure out who's interested in what terms and that type of thing. And we had about a hundred and, I think it was about a hundred and twenty million or something like that to sell. And according to that, we had interest of nearly four times that. Um, evidently Rapid City has good bonds. Our bond rating did go up from an AA three to an AA two also as part of this process. So that's another bonus for the city that will help reduce interest rates. Um, I got my final numbers right before we sat, uh, sat down to sit for this meeting. And the final savings, um, for the city is eleven million, eight hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars and fourteen cents.
And Jason Solomon.
I just want to say thank you for, that's amazing. Uh, that's awesome work. It, whenever you save that much money on refinancing, it's awesome. Uh, you deserve a kudos for that, Pauline. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jason. Ron Waffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I had a question for Pauline on the downtown business improvement district. That, those, uh, assessments are done by square footage?
It is, it's based on value of the property and it's split into two different zones. So the core is considered zone one and it's a dollar fifty per thousand valuation. Yeah. And then zone two is the outlying areas and it's seventy-five cents per hundred thou, or per thousand evaluation.
I just wondered if they were seeing the same kind of appreciation that the housing market is seeing.
You know, it doesn't look like it. We do have a cap every year, but the commercial looks like it's pretty still, pretty much still in line downtown.
And I, I won't reiterate what Alderman Solomon said, but I had a question about, so you're saying the interest on that hundred and twenty million was four hundred and eighty million roughly?
No.
Okay. I thought you said it was four times that number.
No, that's, the interest of the people that wanted to buy the bonds was nearly four times what we had to sell.
That makes sense.
I'm like, you, you confused me with your question. That was my look here. But yeah, the interest initially. So what that means is the ones that had the high interest, that people are interested in the bonds, they went back and tweaked the interest rate and were, they were able to lower the interest rate a little bit more. And so that's how.
It's like they can, man, that seems a little crazy. So, but, okay. Thank you. That cleared that up in my head.
Thank you, Ron. Ben, are you taking over Public Works?
Yeah.
Fourteen through twenty-three.
Is this the right mic? Yes. Okay. Yeah, item number fourteen is just a standard change order for our twenty-twenty ADA project. Um, item fifteen and sixteen are actually related to each other to a former, or a previous agreement that we have with the, for a project that we're working on. Uh, seventeen is the, uh, servicing phase of our Tower Road Restabilization Project. Uh, eighteen is actually, uh, and a, an amendment to our agreement with Ferber to investigate this letter of the Lomar for FEMA. Nineteen was just another change order for our underground, for underground construction. And leave twenty-one through twenty-three are some items I'm not exactly sure about. But if you have any questions, I can kind of gather them for you guys. And so. Do you guys have any questions over the items that we just went over?
I don't see anybody in the queue.
Okay, thank you.
And Vicki.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item twenty-four, um, this, uh, associated item before you at your last city council meeting was to amend the FY twenty-one annual action plan. We received about eight thousand dollars more from HUD that we get to distribute through our CDBG program. At that same meeting, we failed to request that you authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign that, that amended agreement. So we're doing that today. And that's all that request is. And then, uh, item twenty-five is, uh, an amendment. And then item 25 is an amendment to the major street plan. Kip Harrington's here and he'll give you a very brief description as to why this is before you. Typically, you don't see these.
Good afternoon, Kip Harrington, Long Range Planning. This is just simply a realignment of the future extension of Bunker Drive. The property owner that is doing a development up there came in and wanted to realign the street to more closely match their existing development. So it kind of parallels Misty Woods Lane a little bit better. However, by realigning it, it then shifts that alignment on the neighboring property owner a little bit. And since they were not able to secure the signature of the neighboring property owner in agreement with this change, it has to go to a public hearing. Otherwise, we would have been able to do this administratively. But they tried contacting the neighboring property owner through certified mail, never got anything back. So we're going through the standard process of public hearing on this comprehensive plan amendment.
Thank you, Kip. Thank you, Vicki. I don't see any questions. And we're adjourned.